Welcome to the May 8, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Will everyone please rise, face the flag, and place your right hand over your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Sixty-seven years ago today, the Allied Forces formally accepted the unconditional surrender of the armed forces of Nazi Germany and the end of Adolf Hitler stood right. May 8 was henceforth commemorated as VE Day, Victory in Europe Day, and on this specific day spontaneous celebrations broke out all over the world as well as in our jewel city. Let us pray in remembrance of those who served their nation abroad and at home in what was our finest hour. Let us remember everyone, Americans of all races and background and faiths, who paid the ultimate price, black, white, Latino, Asian, Armenian, male and female. Let us remember the words of President Eisenhower, leader, supreme leader of the Allied Forces, who said, "Through force, though force can protect in emergency, only justice, fairness, consideration, and cooperation can finally lead men to the dawn of eternal peace." To honor all those who served, died, and survived, to build our nation and rebuild the world, let us, as a community, work to be a force of justice, fairness, consideration, and cooperation tonight and always. Amen.
Kasakian, then we have your report.
Agenda for the May 8, 2012 regular meeting of Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 3, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is a presentation on appointments at 3:00 a.m., Agenda preview of the meetings of May 14 and 15, 2012.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next week, on Monday, May 14, at 12 noon, we will commence our second set of budget study sessions with the City Council. So, May 14 at 12 noon, Director of Administrative Services Finance, this is regarding a budget study session for fiscal year 2012-2013, and Department Budget summaries, which will include Public Works, Glendale Water and Power, Community Development, Library, Arts and Culture Department, Community Services and Parks, and the Fire Department. For the following day, on May 15, we will also be conducting another special meeting for a budget study session at 10:00 a.m., Director of Administrative Services Finance, budget study session again for fiscal year 2012-2013, and the Department Budget summaries will include the Police Department. Other departments will be the City Attorney, Human Resources, Administrative Services, Information Services Department, and Management Services. And that will again commence at 10:00 a.m. on May 15. On that same date, which is the City Council Day on May 15, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have one business agenda item, that's Director of Community Development, consideration and prioritization of current affordable housing development opportunities. That afternoon, for the Glendale Successor Agency, we have no business agenda items. We do have a meeting of the City Council, this is a special public meeting, it's a public hearing, Director of Community Development, this is a final project entitlements for a five-star cinema, and this is to be located at 128 through 130 North Maryland Avenue, and this is to commence around 3:00 p.m. That evening, for the City Council meeting on May 15, to commence at 6:00 p.m., we have a couple of items under consent, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, purchase of miscellaneous advanced metering infrastructure, metadata management system, parts and equipment used to operate and maintain the city's water AMI system. Director of Public Works, this is the Acacia wastewater and street improvement project. Under action items, we have two items, City Treasurer, this is the City Treasurer's quarterly investment review as of March 31, 2012, and lastly, Director of Information Services and the Fire Chief, this is an amendment to an agreement with Agilisys to provide installation and configuration of security appliances at Verdugo Fire Communications Center to upgrade network security by creating a firewall. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to turn to City Attorney Michael Garcia for an update on the closed-session items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, the records should reflect that the two closed-session items at 1A and 1B were not held today and will be held over until next week.
Okay, next, please.
At 3B is a proclamation designating May 2012 as Older Americans Month.
All right, and I see a lot of older Americans in the audience, and a couple up here, too. Well, more than a couple, but... Accepting the proclamation for the multitudes in the chamber are Richard Jover Sr. and whoever else wants to come to the podium. And the proclamation reads as follows, where... Yeah, good, we're gonna have a whole group of people coming forward. Okay, the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas the city of Glendale is a community that includes over thirty thousand citizens aged sixty and older, the city of Glendale is committed to helping all individuals maintain their health and independence in later life. The older adults in the city of Glendale have an important role in sharing knowledge, wisdom, and understanding of the history of our community through interactions with children, youth, and adults from other generations. The fruits of knowledge and experience can be effectively transferred from generation to generation through meaningful social interaction and with their interaction with family, friends, and neighbors across generations to enrich the lives of everyone involved. Our community can provide opportunities to enrich citizens, young and old, by emphasizing the value of including elders in public and family life and by providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow older adults to participate in social activities in the community. Therefore, I Frank Quintero, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim May 2012 as Older Americans Month and urge every citizen to take time this month to engage with our older citizens through enjoyable social interactions such as sports, games, contests, and other forms of play." And I'll have Mr. Weaver interact with the... For no particular reason.
If I can say something, Councilman Weaver, good evening, Mayor Quintero and Councilmembers.
Have them present the proclamation.
Okay, we can do that first, sure.
But my seniority has done an educating piece. It's gone aways, it doesn't follow the script in there. How many of you are over seventy-two? Okay, I can relate to a lot of you. Anyhow, it's my privilege as one of you to present you with the Older Americans Month proclamation. I hope you all live up to a ripe old age. You're all young, right? Congratulations.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Quintero, Councilmembers, staff. I'm Joanne Vindita, I'm the Community Service Manager with our Community Services and Parks Department. As we're celebrating Older Americans Month, we're honoring all our active seniors within Glendale. We have a lot of seniors that do a lot of things, these are our active seniors that are participating. A lot are not here, but they're out, they're playing. The theme this month, this year, is Never Too Old to Play, and so that will be the theme of all the celebrations that take place this month throughout the LA County. Just ten to fifteen minutes of activity, constant motion, will allow for agility, for balance, for coordination, and keeps the brain alive and makes the brain continue to function and plan. Flexibility is important, so we're very honored to have a lot of group of seniors that love to play on our park and rec programs, and some of those are... These seniors are all still active and in the game. Pickleball.
Yay!
Billiards. Stretch and fitness. Zumba classes. Line dancing. Aerobic exercise class. Tai Chi. Tai Chi. We have active clubs and wood carving, back amon club, the knitting club, the book club, the bridge club. We have over one hundred and twenty-one soccer players that play master soccer Monday through Friday, Tuesday through Friday at the Glendale Sports Complex. Actually, Thursday is Seventy-plus Day, so anyone seventy-plus is more than welcome to participate on Thursdays. The oldest player we do have playing is eighty-four years old and runs well. One of our soccer groups is preparing to go to our sister city in Korea, so that will be a nice experience for all of them. And in this summer, we're gonna be having the Pacific Pool open, so we will have aerobic water exercise and water aerobics going on. So parks really do make life better in the city of Glendale, and we're proud of all the activities that we bring to all the seniors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Those things, I just sit there. I'm exercising my brain. I guess the seniors want to stay and see a council meeting.
And the next proclamation is for our Public Works Department, and accepting the proclamation are members of the Public Works Department. The proclamation reads as follows, "Public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life..." We'll hold on a minute while the chamber clears. We've got some rowdy senior citizens.
They're following the leader.
They're old, they're doomed.
Did she hit a hundred yet?
She's ninety-nine.
Have a lovely dinner. Where are you going?
There he goes, see, you just can't take seniors anywhere, you know? All right, "Whereas public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the city of Glendale and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside. The support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as maintenance services, fleet management, engineering, traffic and transportation, and integrated waste management. The employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure service in a quality manner. A well-planned, designed, and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent upon a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer satisfaction, and who strive to accomplish their everyday task efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community. National Public Works Week calls upon all citizens and civic organizations in the city of Glendale to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing for our local infrastructure and to recognize a contribution which Public Works officials make every day to the betterment of our residential health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. We always have Steve Zern, your director, here, and Rubik Galanian is normally here. I noticed he was taking pictures of proud father, but I'm very happy to have the rank and file workers here tonight to accept this award. I know you all do a wonderful job, it's sort of unsung and sometimes under the radar, but the quality of everything that you do certainly shows. We're the best in Southern California, as I drive around and see the other cities, so... Najarian.
My pleasure.
Don't you all have a pancake breakfast coming up?
Yes, we do.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
I'm gonna be making pancakes.
I'm gonna be eating pancakes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, on behalf of the Public Works Traffic and Transportation Department and the Director of Public Works, we would like to accept this proclamation. I am Myrna Martinez, I work for the Traffic and Transportation Division, and I also was selected to be Employee of the Year for my division. If I may, with my other colleagues, I would like for each one of them to come up and introduce themselves. Thank you.
And also to mention the section you work for.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Staff, my name is Stephen Luhon, Community Outreach Assistant, Public Works Administration.
My name is Arturo Moreno, I work in for Interiguas, my name is Tropo Pereira, thank you for everything.
My name is Vanik Nadiman, and I'm representing Engineering.
Good evening, I'm Roy Rodriguez, I'm with Maintenance Services.
I'm Albert D., and I'm with Facilities Services.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Bob Tilly, I work out of the police garage. Thank you.
We thank you, and we accept this proclamation for our National Public Works Week.
Thank you very much.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Staff comments, Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I would like to request that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Armin Delanian, and I would like the City Clerk, Arti Kasakian, to read a short biography of his works in the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Manukian. Armin Delanian, a veteran of Radio Free Europe and Radio Liberties Armenian Services, passed away on April 24 at the age of fifty-six in Glendale, California. Armin was one of the founders of Radio Free Europe and Radio Liberties Bureau in Yerevan in 1992, soon after the nation's independence, where he worked until he joined RFE RL's headquarters in Munich, Germany in 1994. He was one of the first journalists in post-Soviet Armenia to report on the most vital political, social, and economic issues of his country. Between 95 and 2006, Armin worked in RFE RL's headquarters in Prague. He left Prague for Glendale in 2006, where he worked as a journalist of various LA-based Armenian media and served as a correspondent for Armenian Public Radio. He is survived by his wife, three sons, and a daughter, and on personal note, in working with him, I have to say that he was a fine gentleman of high integrity and honesty who always sought the truth in whatever story he was pursuing or covering.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman.
Today, at Metropolitan Water District, we talked about what they called a swap termination payment, and this is something that I would like us to consider for Glendale. And what this is, is it's basically the same as refinancing your home, only you do it with your municipal bonds. Given that the interest rates are so low, a lot of municipalities and agencies are looking at refinancing their bond debt to get, take advantage of those lower rates. Some of the areas, some of the agencies that have done this recently is the Getty Museum, the Los Angeles Wastewater System, San Francisco Airport, and the Florida Municipal Power Agency, and now Metropolitan is going to be doing the same. So I would like us at the city to look into the feasibility of doing that. Thank you.
I... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand there was a community outreach meeting regarding the Honolulu Road Diet this past week, and I got several letters from residents who felt that they had not been made aware of it and that the outreach was coming after the decision had been made. I also got a copy of a report from the University of Michigan, which sheds some more light on the safety issues regarding road diets. So I'd like information on the outreach meetings, or meeting, or meetings that were held, as well as some comment on the University of Michigan report. I think it's the University of Michigan.
Michigan State.
Could be Michigan. Could be the Spartans, I'm thinking Wolverines, right.
January of this year. January of this year, but it was of Michigan State. I believe that's the same one. I'll send copies to Mr. Ochoa and all of you.
We got them, I think.
I haven't read it, but I'd like to have that come back to us for discussion. I don't want to reconsider the item at this point, but I'd like to at least have a chance to discuss it and hear from staff, and quite frankly, from the public who felt that they were left out of the loop in this process.
I'll second it. Okay. Well, I want to talk about the very successful Verdugo Mountains 10K trail run and hike. It started at sort of the base of the mountains there at Brand Park, and total distance of 6.2 miles, an elevation gain of seventeen hundred feet, and there were over six hundred and fifteen registered runners, it appeared to be more than that, it was just, it was a mob. At seven o'clock in the morning, as I got up and drove there, I couldn't help but thinking, are people really gonna show up for this on a Sunday morning? There you go. There you go, but yes, they did. Lots of local...
Where are you?
I'm gonna talk about my achievements later in the presentation, and anyway, it was kind of cool, as you could tell from the sort of overcast, which was fine, but yeah, so six hundred and fifteen official runners, but a lot more people that sort of were walking and just generally... I'm gonna talk about that guy's participation, too. Top male was a gentleman from Eagle Rock, who also won last year, and he set a new course record, forty-three seconds faster than last year. He did it in forty-two minutes. I repeat, an elevation gain of seventeen hundred feet. Then the oldest finisher was seventy-seven, Tom Katuski, he did an hour and forty-five minutes, not bad. The youngest finisher was only seven months old, she was carried by her mom, Gabrielle Guglia, and so she was off to an early start that morning. Then there were some notable people in the event, Carl Pogalitis, who came in at an hour and nineteen minutes, six minutes slower than last year. So his, all his duties as a police captain seemed to be... And then we have Arti Kasakian, who was twenty-three minutes slower than last year.
I made sure that no one was left at the top of the hill.
Right.
And that the baby made it down okay.
He was sort of a Red Cross tiaj, but anyway, two hours and thirty-eight minutes, which was very good. And then one of our, another employee from Community Development, Moises Carrillo, was an hour and fourteen minutes, but it was just fantastic. The runners were, came from as far north as Modesto and as far south as San Diego. There were volunteers from the Key Club, the Scouts, thirteen police explorers were everywhere, all of them donating their time. There were a number of sponsors, Glendale Memorial, Massage Envy, the Running Shoe New Balance, our local Embassy Suites, lots of different sponsors, including Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, of course, Glendale Police, Glendale Fire, and Gears. But all in all, it was a tremendous event, thanks to all of our Parks and Community Development staff, including Mark Sturdivan, who I think was sort of the brainchild who kept kind of pushing this along. And then the Parks Foundation, they were very much involved, a lot of the people that serve on that foundation board were there. It was just a great, just a great event, I hope to do it again next year. Once again, like the Adventist run through the downtown, I was absolutely the quickest in getting to Portal's Bakery later in the, so I won that award again. But anyway, it was a very healthy event, and my hat's off to all of the departments.
Sponsored, was it a local... Do you know who the sponsor was?
It was our own, well, we had multiple sponsors, it was our own event put on by the Parks Department.
By our own group, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And anyway, it was very, very impressive. I forget why I missed the first one last year, but I'm definitely gonna be there next year, because it was quite inspiring, actually. And I'm expecting a better performance from you, Mr. Kasakian. Just don't challenge me to go up there with you.
I was making sure the trail was clean afterwards. Picking up trash.
Anyway, thank you. Okay, next.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just wanted to make a quick announcement. The Glendale, this announcement was made last week, but the Glendale YWCA Shelter for Battered Women is going to be teaming up with Keller Williams Realty on May 10 of this year, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They're gonna do a drive-by drop-off, and what they're looking for is gently-used strollers, car seats, infants and toddlers clothes, children's pajamas, children's socks, women's clothing and towels, and there's a whole list of other items that they could use. For more information, people should call Keller Williams Realty at 818-432-3200. Again, that number is 818-432-3200. Again, this is a joint project by Keller Williams and YWCA Shelter for Battered Women.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Okay, I have a card speak on 5C, and Mr. Manukian would like to pull 5B.
Move the remainder to the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
5B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Mountain Dew Trail and Catalina Verdugo Trail construction project at the Glendale Sports Complex in connection with Spec. 3468. B1 is a resolution adopting a spec and directing a city clerk to advertise for a request for proposals for design-build services. I2 is motion approving the youth employment plan for the Catalina Verdugo Trail project as required by the Los Angeles County Competitive Trails Grant Program.
I just, I just wanted to have the community actually hear about this project, because I think it's a worthwhile project, and it's, I didn't want it to go by the, with the consent calendar without the community being aware of what is being done up there by the sports complex.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, Councilmember Manukian, and members of the City Council. These two projects are the result of two grants we were able to receive. One grant was from the federal government, and that is the Mountain Dew Trail, which will be an ADA-accessible trail above the soccer fields at the sports complex, and it will be accessible to motorized and non-motorized wheelchairs. It will have a fitness equipment that is specifically designed for handicapped persons, again, with a variety of different disabilities, and that's coupled with a second grant that we received, also to develop another trail, also behind the sports complex, a little bit longer, this one's 1.7 miles, and that's a grant from the county of Los Angeles. And one feature that that county grant has is a requirement to include youth employment opportunities as part of the trail improvements, and we happen to have a youth organization in our community, in our department, and so it'll provide an opportunity to coordinate with the Glendale Youth Alliance and provide more jobs to our youth. So we're very excited, these are relatively simple projects, of course, that's always a kiss of death, but these projects should be done once we start construction in two to three months, so.
Thank you very much, I'll move the items at B1 and 2.
Second. And let me point out, I was remiss in not pointing out that the Director of Parks, Mr. Duran, was also there at 6:30 in the morning, directing and generally getting involved with all the, with all the activities. There were a number of Parks professionals involved, including the Director. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Would you read 5C into the record?
5C is Director of Public Works regarding 2011 storm drain construction and replacement project in connection with the specification number 3406R. C1 is a motion awarding construction contract to ROI Engineering Works, Inc. in an amount of $406,761, authorizing a reserve for contingencies in an amount of $81,000, and rejecting all other bids. C2 is a resolution appropriating $337,423 to provide funds for the project.
Okay, Mr. Zern, so this is a storm drain construction and replacement projects.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, and we have a number of locations that we're upgrading throughout the city, and it's part of what has become our annual program to keep our storm drain system in good order.
Okay, I have one speaker, Chinook Ramirez.
This is the right thing to do. To the Director of Public Works regarding the 2011 drain construction and replacement project in connection with specification... Project in Connection with specifications number 3406R. Before you make the motion to award a construction contract to R.Y. Engineering Works Incorporated in the amount of $406,761, and authorizing a reserve for contingencies in the amount of $81,000, make sure that they first and foremost hire military veterans and/or their families and/or legal, law-abiding citizens only, and to use e-Verify services at INS to confirm citizenship and/or legal status. If not, reject their bid and all other felonious construction contract bidders who hire criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers and/or anchor babies. These are very hard times, and we expect all city contracts to adhere to all laws. Again, God bless the United States military and all law-abiding citizens, and that, I make that humbly and graciously. Thank you.
Thank you.
5C1.
And 2. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next is oral communication. This is a three-minute event announcement portion. We'll revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Library to tell you about our next event. Our next event will occur on May 17th, 7:00, at Central Library. Parking is validated, and you should park at the structure joining the library and joining the marketplace. We believe, and I believe, that our program is going to be one of the best of the year. We're having Lawrence Dorr, M.D., a Laconyatta orthopedic surgeon, who is known throughout the world as an outstanding orthopedic surgeon, and as a person who has taken other doctors around the world and done surgeries to the hip and the knee, and he's done that throughout the country, and he's known throughout the country. Now, why do we bring Dr. Dorr to the library? He is an author, and he's written a tremendous historical novel called Die Once, Born Twice. And this is a novel that only somebody like him, from his heart and soul and, and mind, could write this type of a novel. It's a novel about pre, starts with pre-Civil War times, and brings us right up to Guadalcanal. And it's about a family, a famous Philadelphia family, who ended up, throughout generations, contributing to all the positive things that happened in America as far as medical discoveries like penicillin and all sorts of advanced medical miracles that occurred during those years. And Dr. Dorr describes how these things came about as part of his historical novel story. It was just a great book, and we urge you to come there. Now, a little bit more about Dr. Dorr. As I think I told you, he lives in Laconyatta. He has an institute at Good Samaritan Hospital. He's written 300 books. He's lectured to universities, medical schools, not only all over the country, but all over the world. He's been sought after to speak on various occasions. He's been honored as much as a doctor can be honored, and he's honoring us by coming to the library. And we're further honoring him and what he's done as a volunteer, because we're having the Glendale Healthy Kids co-sponsor this event. And we're glad to do that, and they will be with us the night we have this event at the library. And for those of you who have not got the flyers, and I'll try to get to as many people as possible, tomorrow night is the Taste of Glendale.
Okay, listen, you didn't get any time.
I'll, I'll finish this, yeah. And I will be passing out flyers to those who attend the Taste of Glendale, so no one will miss Dr. Dorr on May 17th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Was the city clerk running his own stopwatch that way on that Mountain Dew run?
Yeah, we better check his, better check his time again. Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Next item is action items, and 8A is Director of Public Works Regarding Brand Library and Arts Center Renovation Project in Connection with specification number 3447. At 8A1 is a motion awarding construction contract to George C. Hopkins Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $4,394,570, and rejecting all other bids.
Ms. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. What we have is a very momentous and exciting project before you, something that the council can take pride in for having set the priorities, saved the capital funds, and are now, we are recommending a bid to allocate those funds to a project that has been much anticipated by the community, and we'll have Mr. Zern give you the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that, that certainly is a great introduction for this. This is, this is, as you know, normally a situation where we'd put this on the consent calendar and award it as part of our regular construction process. But again, as Mr. Ochoa said, this is a landmark facility in the city of Glendale, provides a tremendous service to the community, and we want to make sure that it continues to be a destination point for our residents and for visitors to this city for a long time to come. And with that in mind, we undertook this, what is primarily a renovation project, a maintenance upgrade of, of the facility. And we came to you previously in, in May, or previously, this is, previously to go through the design process and, and present that to you. And today, we're proud to come back and recommend that you award the bid. The second part of this is to take a little time to recognize something that we don't get to recognize very often in the particular economy we're in, and that's a bright spot. And this is certainly a bright spot. One of the few things that we can relish is that the downturn in the economy has provided us an opportunity to receive some very competitive bids. In this particular case, an extremely competitive bid, 27% below the estimate. In here, we call it engineer's estimate, but there was a professional cost estimator on this job. So this is beyond just our own internal estimation, but, but the, the architectural team consisted of a, of a cost consultant as well. And so we've gotten together with, with both the architect, the cost consultant, with the, the recommended contractor on this, George Hopkins Construction Company. It's a solid bid. We're very, very confident with what we have, and we look forward to moving towards, towards the construction and renovation of the facility. That's, that's basically what I have. We do have a member of the architectural team here. If you want to go back over what the design features are of the building, also Ms. Cleary is here, and Ruben Galanian, who's handling construction and project management.
All I want to say is, $2.5 million savings. We budgeted the, around the engineer's estimate, I presume.
Correct.
So that's $2.5 million that go to other things, and it's nice to see a Glendale company get the job.
Absolutely.
Keeping that in the city, so both good.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with Mr. Weaver. I just want to make sure that the remaining funds that are allocated for this project come back to council for reallocation and not be seen as a slush fund that could be used for additional, for additional construction, although I think this project is certainly worth it. Second, in terms of project management, which I requested initially, I think Mr. Galanian is a very capable manager, and I, I'm glad that he's the one who will be managing the project. I just want to make sure that he remains the project manager throughout the project, and, and.
Putting pressure on him.
I, I will put pressure on him. He's a professional, and he should be used to it. I think he's perfectly capable of handling it. I just don't want to see what happened with the building of the police building happen here. I think we've all learned a good lesson from that project. It's, it's important to have the professionals do, everyone do their job. And it also, it is also important that Mr. Galanian has the resources necessary, necessary to, to provide, to do the job in an adequate manner where we're not going to go over $2 million in the project. So I hope that we keep close tabs on the expenditures, and, and I encourage that Mr. Galanian get all the support he needs to make sure that the project comes in within the budgeted amount and within the, a lot of time for the project.
Mr. Manukian, you have my word on all of those.
But we, we have a good relationship with Hopkins. They did the adult recreation right.
They've done several projects for the city.
Yeah, but that came up, was it under the timeline and under budget?
I believe both, yes.
They did the pool, too?
Yes. They've done Integrated Waste Management Center, Recycling Center for us. They've done quite a few projects, and all of them, and at least those that, that I've been involved with, have been very successful.
Very good. I look forward to this project completion, completion.
I don't know if we need a speech or anything. I'm ready to make a motion.
May, I'll go ahead and make your motion.
I'll make, move 8A1.
Second. I just want to comment that I think this is an excellent project. This is going to really add some value to that, to that site. And we've already made our, we've already made our motion. Second. So I'm very enthusiastic about it, and we'll get it done.
If I may, briefly, sorry. The, the motion, a revised motion was provided just to include the contingency that's noted in the staff report. It was missing from the motion, and we included that. So the 20% contingency that Mr. Zern, it's in the motion now.
So the motion is amended.
Correct.
There, there is 20% contingency on the motion, right?
There is now, and that was.
The amended motion.
In the amended motion.
This is one where there could be a high degree of unknowns. Remember at the airport, let's see, 5.5% contingency, so.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Next is the oral communication, where discussion is limited on this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And C manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. Arutin Hartunian.
Honorable council and staff, before I begin, I would like to pay my respect to the elderly residents of the city. Because it's, since they, because, because of them, we are able to enjoy and cherish the finest traditions of our nation. I'm here on behalf of Unified Young Armenians, a local, Glendale-based, apolitical, nonprofit youth organization, to thank the city of Glendale, all the departments, and most importantly, its residents, for the city's sponsorship of two of the most important and successful events that the city has organized. First, the Armenian Genocide Remembrance Event at the Alex Theater on April 24th, and the second, on the Men's and Women's against Men on April 26th. These two events were organized part, as part of the Week of Remembrance within the city of Glendale. And they stand as a testament of the city's commitment to human rights and dedication to fight against bigotry and racism. We're also extremely thankful to the city of Glendale and its residents for supporting and allowing us to organize the Candlelight Vigil in the city of Glendale on April 23rd. And again, we are extremely, extremely thankful to every single department who have supported us in this project. The Candlelight Vigil was, we believe that it was a wonderful event, but the only thing that we believe is missing from that site and from that event is an Armenian genocide monument. It's a monument that the city of Glendale, years ago, many, many years ago, has dedicated, generously dedicated a piece of land, a plot for creation of this monument. And we are here as a youth organization to pledge our support and do our best to organize and to build this monument for a future Armenian genocide memorial site in Glendale. In the last few weeks, and especially after the city of Glendale's event, we have received numerous calls from the city residents, from different segments of the community, who are pledging their support for this issue. And we're just here to respectfully ask the city council to put this issue on the agenda, revive this project, so we can at least have it before 2015. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chinook Ramirez.
This is a matter of principle. Truly, I am compelled to apologize to the honorable ex-governor of California and the United States Marine Corps veteran, Pete Wilson, and his family. And as a legal, law-abiding Mexican-American citizen, Honorable Pete Wilson, sir, you were 100% right on target. You rightfully pushed Proposition Number 187 in the 1994 ballot measure in exposing the criminal illegal aliens epidemic, but you got grossly and unjustly maligned for standing up to defend the United States Constitution. Bravo, Pete Wilson, sir. Now, America and its national democratic sovereignty is under domestic terroristic siege by these criminal illegal aliens, criminal gangbangers, and their anchor babies, which I call umbilical cord changos. And alas, we have another great torchbearer of the United States Constitution, and I salute the honorable governor of Arizona, Jan Brewer, who, coupled with the honorable Pete Wilson, stood in stand against illegal immigration with all its loophole myths and fallacies, with their unperverted rule of law perseverance. And I quote Mrs. Jan Brewer, "I have a duty to uphold the Constitution and the responsibility to protect the people of Arizona," end of quote, as did the honorable Pete Wilson as ex-governor of California. They stood up for the rights and wrongs of society amidst an onslaught of malicious attacks. Yet that's more than I can say for our racist and politically biased bullies in Glendale, i.e. Mayor Frank Quintero and city attorney Michael J. Garcia. And when that changes, I'll let you know, and Glendale Police Department. Caveat, with the exception of the Sheriff's Department, LAPD, and Glendale PD brilliantly, victoriously chopper pilots. So whip those puppies and whip 'em good. Moreover, on a positive note, I am ecstatic that the following states are following Arizona. They are Alabama, Georgia, Indiana, South Carolina, and Utah. Et al. Furthermore, Governor Jan Brewer wants local law enforcement and the feds to crack down on those harboring, sheltering, transporting, and hiring illegal alien gangbangers and anchor babies. I say sanction and incarcerate the following business agencies for being felonious. They are Chevron gas stations, the Glendale Galleria, the Americana, all security company outfits, all restaurants, fast food chains, McDonald's, Subway, El Pollo Loco, Starbucks, Jack in the Box, Carl's Jr., Taco Bell, Denny's, IHOP, et cetera, CVS, Walgreens, Food for Less, Vons, Ralph's, Walmart, Target, JCPenney's, Nordstrom's, Bloomingdale's, Macy's, Metro Trains and Buses, Beeline's, LA Shuttle buses, the ACLU, Fair Housing Council, Legal Aid, Human Relations Commission, Maldif, Religious Immigrants Rights Group, construction companies, telecommunications companies, Time Warner Cable Company, movie theaters, process servers, Glendale Police Department, and all law enforcement agencies who failed to adhere to these federal mandates, and up to and including the secret safe haven sanctuary cities, Glendale, Pasadena, and Burbank, for they are not safe. But contrary to what the politicos say, it is unsafe, and I, I have firsthand experience, and it's a zone of danger. Case in point, at the corner of Jackson and Broadway, between these two businesses, Edward Dunn Paint Store and Hot Coffee Cafe Shop on Broadway, you have several criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers loitering in the parking lot and obstructing the sidewalk for patrons and pedestrians, including myself. Frustratingly and upset are many of the surrounding businesses, who told me that their concerns and fears, yet the city of Glendale nor the Glendale PD have done anything to deter these growing fears, as they did nothing to help me in the criminal assault with Chevron gas station. They'll just call us crazy, or have us mentally analyzed. So there is no equal protection under the law if you are a military veteran, a legal law-abiding citizen, and/or a business merchant. But unfortunately, in the city of Glendale, if you are an illegal criminal alien, a criminal gangbanger, and an anchor baby, boy, you have all the protection, assistance, and rights, not under the United States Constitution, by these twisted and perverted Glendale safe haven sanctuary cities like Glendale and the Glendale Police Department. Thus, these mentally twisted politicos and law enforcement agencies are enabling and perpetuating these criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers, who are homicidal maniacs, to commit more violence and mayhem, where we will one day have an openly brutal and vicious melee outbreak, and God help you. And again, lastly, I want to thank my pilots who are flying over today from Gillespie Airfield, my Gillespie Airfield Daredevil pilot extraordinaire, and the United States military. Hurrah, rah, bless you, bless you, bless you. Thank you.
Roberta Medford, followed by Barbara Jean Ense. Roberta Medford, followed by Barbara Jean Nensy.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, attendees, and viewers. I'm Roberta Medford. I live in Montrose. I'm here tonight to speak about a situation unfolding right now on a place called Jeju Island in South Korea. That's spelled J-E-J-U. Many here in our city have vital interests and deep connections to Korea, and there's also a way that our city government can be helpful in this unfolding tragedy as well. Jeju Island is an autonomous island province off the southwest coast of South Korea. It is of great significance in Korean history and is a unique environmental treasure beloved by Koreans and recognized worldwide as a global, for its global biological significance. First, the history. In 1948, at the, right at the end of World War II, the island was punished because they protested the dividing of their country, and they then boycotted the first election of the newly divided South Korea. The punishment was that 30,000, that is the number of senior citizens in Glendale we now know, that was 10% of the residents of Jeju Island, were killed in a massacre carried out by the South Korean security services and paramilitaries, under the direction of the US military government that was running the place at the time. It was a precursor of the senseless brutality of the Korean War soon to follow. The South Korean government in 2006 acknowledged this dark episode in their country's history and issued a formal apology to the people of Jeju Island. It then declared that Jeju Island would forever be known as the island of world peace. Okay, that's the history. Next, biology. Jeju Island is a very small, largely unspoiled scenic location. It is the most popular traditional honeymoon site, apparently, for many Koreans and has been for hundreds of years. It has three UNESCO World Natural Heritage sites. It has nine UNESCO geoparks, and the entire island is a global biosphere reserve declared because of its very diverse plant and animal life. They live a very traditional lifestyle in Jeju. It's not nearly as developed as the rest of South Korea, and their lifestyle depends on preserving this environment so that their agriculture, tourism, and fishing, which is the sole components, really, sectors of their economy, can flourish. Okay, what is wrong with this picture? The bad news is that the South Korean government, and forgive me if this is old news to people watching and you, but it was news to me. The South Korean government, believe it or not, has embarked on building a huge new naval base in a little village, and I hope I don't murder this too badly, named Gangjeong. It's a tiny village. It has about 1,500 residents on pretty, the prettiest coast of Jeju Island. The may, it's being built by the South Koreans at, you know, who knows how many hundreds of millions of dollars. The main use, though, will be by the US Armed Forces for nuclear submarines, destroyers, and to base a ballistic missile system. The islanders regard this not as making them more secure in any way, shape, or form, but rather like having a big bullseye painted on their foreheads. Reef's, freshwater springs, tidal pools, volcanic columns, and beautiful coastlines and other natural wonders that are supposedly protected by international designations are right in the construction zone. 94% of the 1,500 residents of the tiny little village of Gangjeong have voted against this base. There are active protests resulting in many, many arrests, huge fines, and loss of civil liberties. But they are not giving up, and they have asked people like me to help them publicize this David versus Goliath struggle. I don't have time tonight to give us the many reasons why the last thing this world needs right now is a bunch more armaments and a whole new place to put them. Even overlooking the fact that just a fraction of the money spent on the arms that are going to, that we're going to populate this naval base with, not even thinking about what it would do with, for a city like Glendale, let's just say that the Gangjeong village in particular, and Jeju Island in general, is just about the worst place for a naval base that you can imagine. I think we could be of help by declaring Gangjeong, Korea, a sister city of Glendale to join our other two Korean cities, and please help me save Jeju Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Jean Nensy, followed by Tony Passarella.
Thank you, City of Glendale council, for the proclamation. It was well received. I am a supporter of senior funding and a supporter of seniors, so I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to thank council for their generous funding for our facilities in the community. Please, and I ask you to please continue, including the seniors in our community, in your priorities. Now then, speaking for myself only and fully realizing the council is facing some hard, hard choices, I would like to state that I support, well, let's see, I just want you to know that I would be willing to step aside if there is a choice there for our use. They are our future, and I thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you. Tony Passarella, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff, and viewing public. It's been a while. I had a few hours before the Laker game, so I thought I'd come down and spend some time with you, with you all here. If I would poll everybody in the room and everybody at home, I'm sure that we all know somebody with asthma, with COPD, or possibly lung cancer, right? Well, I certainly do. So I wanted to share this with you. Consider this, if you may. This is commentary from Paul Fassa. It's titled "Denying Chemtrails Is Dangerous To Your Health." Statistical evidence shows that lung issues such as asthma and COPD have risen considerably over the past two decades. While there may be a few factors behind this, hardly anyone includes chemtrails as one of them. Scientists and governments have allowed some partial disclosures on chemtrails or stratospheric geoengineering, framing it as experimental. They openly discuss geoengineering as potential solutions for weather control and protection against global warming. Apparently, they've been doing a lot of open experimenting since the early 1990s. They don't really have to deny that much. There's plenty of denial from those on the ground who don't look up to see anything different. Upon, or upon noticing chemtrails, they will argue that they are contrails. There are even internet pages devoted to scientifically debunking chemtrails as erroneous conspiracy theories similar to Quack Watch sites that go after medical practitioners who successfully treat diseases without drugs. The obvious differences between chemtrails and contrails are as follows. Chemtrails appear from aircraft propulsion systems of all types at stratospheric altitudes 30,000 to 40,000 feet. They are exhaust vapors that become ice crystals in high altitude, low-pressure frigid air. Contrails are harmless and dissipate quickly. They don't linger. They usually extend to 20 to 50 feet behind the aircraft. They are very white and somewhat thinly textured. Sometimes, high-altitude planes can be seen in silver specks without any trail. Chemtrails, however, are very different. Chemtrails often extend from one horizon to the other. Maybe you've seen these crisscross lines in the sky if you look up. Because I'm bringing this to you tonight because this is happening over our, over our city on a continuing basis. I have document, photos, documents, and video documents of this, and I thought maybe you could do something about it. Chemtrails linger for hours or whole days. They tend to fan out and mingle with thousands with themselves or actual clouds, forming larger clouds or haze that covers the sky at higher ground levels. They can be observed drifting downward to earth. Their paths do not correspond with normal commercial airline flight paths. Do you recall meeting any other aircraft while on commercial flight and deviating from the prescribed route to doodle in the sky with the other planes? Of course not. Chemtrails are usually emitted by non-commercial planes. Back on the ground, several key watchers throughout the world have had residue samples analyzed after collecting them in water containers, air traps, and on shubri twigs. They all come up with two common elements, barium and aluminum. Barium is very toxic. Reportedly, it was sprayed from aircraft during Gulf War I to weaken the enemy on the ground. Some consider barium salts more toxic than lead. It affects the lungs directly. Aluminum is a toxin that leads to dementia and neurological diseases. The nasal passages and lungs enable aluminum to have easy entry into the bloodstreams and affect tissue, including the heart and the brain. Even if not breathe in to cause immediate respiratory and other lung, long-term health problems, these two metals are absorbed into drinking water and crop soils. Interestingly, Monsanto has recently genetically engineered an aluminum-resistant gene that can be inserted into crop seeds. In closing, this is in fact going on, people, and folks at home, please do your research in the skies above us. Please look up. I'm coming here to inform and alert the population. You can start with going on the internet and looking up, "What in the world are they spring?" It's a documentary film. "What in the world are these brand?" Tony Passarella, thank you for your time.
Mike Mohill, followed by Catherine Padilla.
I don't think I'm this tall.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. In the good old days, city employees were generally being paid less than in the private sector, but in return, we guaranteed a better pension. Expanded government needs forced property taxes to constantly rise to the point that many senior citizens were forced to give up home ownership. In 1978, voters organized against higher taxes and Proposition 13, limiting property taxes, came into being. Since Proposition 13, government employees' unions became more organized in order to extract from the voters better salaries, better pensions, and better medical benefits that one could find in the private sector. Today's politicians, like councilmembers Friedman, Mnuchin, Najarian, Quintero, Weaver, have all received thousands of dollars in campaign money from the unions. In return for their money and endorsement, they have all become the pawns of the government unions. In my opinion, Rafi Mnuchin is the only councilperson willing to challenge his council colleagues in seriously taking on the unions. His leadership has become a thorn in their side. Council members seeking Mr. Quintero as our new mayor was a slap in the face to Mr. Mnuchin. $100,000 plus lifetime pensions are very common for our government employees, as his retirement dates 50 and 55. For example, former Assistant City Manager Bog McFall, who retired little over a year ago, is enjoying a lifetime pension of over $189,000 annually. Former police chief Randy Adams, $265,000 annually, and fire chief Christopher Gray, over $191,000 annually, all lifetime pensions. Recently, so-called employee salary and pension reform has been nothing more than a Band-Aid approach, just kicking the can down the road. Extending retirement to age 55 rather than 65, like in private industry, would have been a real step forward in pension reform. New union contracts still allow many city employees to retire with pensions of over $100,000 annually for life. Councilman Ara Najarian once said, "If council pushed for significant pension reform," he was afraid the unions would strike back. What Mr. Najarian failed to tell the public was that no-strike action provisions are in every union contract. As unfunded pension and medical benefits continue to drain the city, council is studying ways to reduce the payroll, but the antiquated way of the seniority system, last hired, first fired, and not by merit performance, which only, which only makes employees complacent. Furthermore, collective bargaining discourages competition among the city employees. Why compete when everyone else is treated the same? Today's Social Security maximum payout is about $30,000 annually, and the average Social Security check for an individual is only $14,780 a year for life. Today, our community will be paying for the mistakes of this council and previous councils have made concerning out-of-control and excessive employee salaries, pensions, and medical benefits. As the city has no real enterprise like the Tournament of Roses to increase city revenue, our council continues looking to its residents and businesses, increase for increases in fees, taxes, utility rates, bonds, and others to cover city expenses. In April 2013, the voters of Glendale have another opportunity to elect three new council members who, if not endorsed by the unions or receive money from the unions, can join Councilman Rafi Mnuchin for real reform. It is not too early to search our souls for new leadership. And Councilman Najarian, here is just one of several, the MOU of the firefighters' unions. Their contract, it says, no-strike provision, prohibited conduct, employee termination. It's right here, sir, with the document. They can't strike. Thank you. And here's for you, Mr. City Clerk, and everybody else.
Catherine Padilla, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Quintero and members of the Glendale council. My name is Catherine Padilla, and I am here on behalf of Metro. I would like to let you know that there will be six community open houses held to discuss the SR-710 study, and they begin on May 14th, and they'll continue through May 24th. The locations are throughout the study area, but in particular, on May 14th, there'll be a meeting in El Surino in the evening, and then on May 17th, there'll be a meeting in Eagle Rock, and then May 19th in La Cuenca, and so on and so forth. I want to make you aware of the meetings, and I invite you to please participate. They're very, very important. I think you know that this, these open houses, the purpose of them is to present the alternatives that are being considered for environmental, further environmental review, and there'll be an opportunity for people to learn more about the alternatives, to ask questions, to talk to staff one-to-one, and to provide their comments as part of this effort. So I thank you for the opportunity. There's, I put some pliers in the back. If you'd like more information, you can go online. I'd like the public to know, they can go to metro.net/sr710study for more information. Thank you.
If you come back next week, you'll be able to speak, since it's a public announcement, you'll be able to speak at the beginning of the meeting, the beginning of oral communications where we make announcements. So next week, if you come back, you can speak early on.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The final card is Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, staff, and members of the audience, the three that are left. My name is Margaret Hammond. You know, it's a good thing those seniors were fit, since the elevator being out of commission is a real chore for me, anyway, to get up and down those stairs. I don't understand. No, no provision for a handicap. Anyway, it's all right. The Great American Cleanup is going to be Saturday, May 19th. We're going to be looking for lots of volunteers, and I am, of course, involved with the Clean and Beautiful Committee, and we have volunteers from there, but we need lots of others, and of course, staff is always there. Now, our Clean and Beautiful in cooperation with Neighborhood Services, for many years, I've been involved with it, and as you well know, we have most terrific pla, uh, city. One of the reasons we do is the minimum graffiti, the shopping cart ordinance, which is, in America, is considered one of the outstanding ones there that was ever passed, as I say, so many cities ask us about it, and our smoking ordinance, and I could go on and on. There's been so many things that are, the Clean and Committee, Clean and Beautiful Committee, in cooperation with Neighborhood Services. It's our quality of life that's very important in this city, and those are the things that, keeping graffiti out, keeping trash out, keeping the shopping carts under control. So, we really do need to continue this thinking on this for, as far as homeowners are concerned, your real estate values will go down and so forth, if we did not have those programs and the people that helped to keep the city beautiful. Two weeks ago, 250 volunteers cleaned a brand cemetery, the family cemetery, cleaned it out. It was in very bad shape, very bad condition, and helped clean the trails. I was not part of that group, but I was part of the group Sunday morning volunteering as part of the Glendale Historical Society. We opened up the Doctor's House, which is one of the jewels of the city of Glendale, for free tours, and with Parks and Rec who sponsored that run, I think it was a great deal, just wonderful program. The people were so enthusiastic that attended it, and many of them did, I think we had almost 300 visitors into the Doctor's House. And I do think it shows that our Parks and Rec are out there wanting to use our parks, show off, and also enable people to really enjoy the trails and the Verdugo Mountains. Another great program, again, we're back to people being volunteers, the poster contest, for instance, where we have 10,000 children that are involved in that program. Now, that's 10,000 future citizens of our city that we are already talking to and making them think about what it is in a great, that makes a great neighborhood and a great, Glendale a great place to live. So we have generations coming up on that. And again, we need volunteers, and we get volunteers. I don't know how many were there on Sunday. I know that, as I say, our group was there, and there had to be at least 1,000 people. I mean, it was up and down that trail. I was sitting at the gate and encouraging people to come in, passing out refreshments, cookies and goodies, and water and so forth. So, I did see them all coming and going up and down that trail, and it was quite something. Saardi, too, and Jess, couple of other people, and it wasn't, it was a beautiful day, actually. It wasn't too hot, so it's, it's really, it was really a wonderful thing to see so many families, people carrying children, and how they enjoyed it, that getting out and being able to go hiking up the hills and, and enjoying our, our park. I do hope that Adams Hill will be a priority on that storm drain construction and replacement project that is, that came up under 5C. And again, I hope you all enjoy the city of Glendale, the Parks and Rec programs that are available to everybody, and the seniors, as you can see, really enjoy it. That's, that's what a city's about, is making their citizens happy and have a quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. End oral communications. Any comments, Mr. Menoukian?
Yes, I want to actually reflect on what Mr. Artunian said. I made a call last week during council meeting for the community to get that project off the ground, and I pledge my support to any efforts that can come forward, or any organizations that come forward and work towards that end. I think it's many years, like you said, since the council put that item on the agenda and discussed it and allocated that space on, in the parking lot of the civic auditorium for, for a memorial. I think it's an important project. I'm willing to meet with you and anyone else that is, that is willing to come up and start the efforts in making this a reality, and if, and I would also like to, again, make a call to the community, to call to arms, to come forward and work towards that end, because it's an important issue for the Armenian-American community here in Glendale. I will meet with you afterwards, after we conclude this meeting in the next few minutes, and discuss further. There is no need to put it on the agenda, because it's been discussed, and the council cannot take action on it in terms of funding the project, because that was not, that was not within the capacity of the council at this time. The fundraising issues should be done and was slated to be done by the community, by the organizations in the community, and like I said, I'm willing to work with you to make that, to make that a reality. So, thank you very much for coming today, and I know that during the candlelight vigil and the candlelight, that was, all that was on, on the minds of everyone that was over there, including mine. So it is, it is high time that we work on this, and like I said, I will, I will, I will work with you to make that a reality, and thank you again very much for coming today.
I'd also like to participate. I think it's long overdue, and in fact, the last rendering that I saw of a potential monument there, I thought was excellent. Very good encapsulation, as, you know, good as a monument can do to encapsulate what took place, but I thought it reflected a lot of different things. So if we can find whoever that last architect was that came up with that rendering, I think we'd be off to a pretty good start. Any other comments? Do we have an adjournment in memory of?
Armand Delanyan.
Delanyan. We are adjourned.[1736.11]